We're ready.
Uh, here might call this meeting to order. Please stand and comply.
But the leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call opinions, please.
Counselor Von Gardner. Counselor Quayless.
Here.
Mayor Kiefer is excused. Counselor Cuddy Group.
Yeah.
Counselor Prophet here. Counselor Rockwell.
Here.
Counselor Salata.
Here.
Commissioner Bracy. Commissioner Carbray. Commissioner Connell. Commissioner Irons. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Layton. Commissioner Tonight. Did they realize this started at five thirty?
Yeah.
All right, uh, transportation system plan update. Any official carla.
Good evening. So tonight's another TSP update. We did this a couple of months ago. Uh, the one previously we kind of brought you up to speed with everything that happened to that point. It was mostly background information. I think you're gonna find this evening's more interesting. Um, at this point in time, we're to technical memorandum number six, which is where we begin talking about solutions. Uh, we had a PAC meeting. A couple of weeks ago, um, the public advisory committee went through the tech memo with the consultant, with part of the consultant team. Um, tonight, uh, we've got the land use, uh, development code side of it as well as part of the presentation. Um, I am happy to participate in the conversation, but I'm, I'm, they're doing the presentation. So I'm just gonna let you know that um, the folks we have tonight is, uh, Matt Hugart with Kittleson and Rick, they may need you to share, uh, they, okay, they have already, okay. So, uh, Matt Hugart with Kittleson and Associates. Uh, we also have Eva Gigalas. I've always been concerned by don't get her name quite right, also with Kittleson. And then Shayna, uh, Raver with, um, MIG. So, um, I'm just gonna pass it to you, Matt, and let you pick this up and, and go with it.
Okay, yeah, thanks, everybody. Just assuming everyone can hear me fine.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, well, thanks for the introductions, uh, Carla. Um. Yeah, this is our second, um, of three scheduled, uh, joint city council planning commission work sessions. Um, it's really an opportunity for you all to get updated on our progress and, um, to the extent you're uh, ready and willing, uh, provide some feedback for us, um, on that content. Um, as Carla teed up, the last time we were out there was a little bit more of just existing and future conditions, kind of forecasting work. Uh, if you recall that, um, that was, um, not a significantly exciting, uh, presentation, but it kind of showed, uh, what we thought the future traffic and circulation gaps and needs were gonna look like, um, once you project that demand out over a course of twenty years and we had a healthy dose of, of assumed land use and development, um, as, um, that was projected and built baked into, uh, that analysis. Um, and it was showing, um, just from a quick recap, um, some pretty significant circulation constraints in the city. Uh, the most significant being the kind of lack of connectivity, uh, between the north and the south sides of the city with only the main street and Laurel Lane corridors providing, um, that connectivity. And it was kind of revealing, um, some capacity constraints, particularly along the main street corridor when you factor in not only the existing traffic demands that are out there, um, but the future traffic demands that we're projecting, um, with some pretty significant assumptions of, of continued, uh, residential growth on the south side of the city. And additional highway oriented retail growth in and around the main street interchange. And then, as always, continued growth, um, in and around the Porta Moro. So the combination of all that, uh, was showing some constraints, um, capacity constraints, queuing constraints and um, and a need to address, uh, those constraints, um, with some long-term, um, improvements. So we're here this evening to talk about what those might look like as well as, um, other improvements for the other modes in the city, bike, pad, intersection, safety, freight, you name it. Um, so I got a presentation. I'm gonna start that now and, um, uh, we'll get going here. I think it should be sharing now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I kind of talked about that. So a little bit about our schedule. So, um, we are in, um, kind of the, I'd say the back end of, of our work effort here. Uh, we've gone through, uh, existing and future conditions, talk, we've gone through and had various public engagement and outreach exercises a few months ago. Um, we're now in the solution development evaluation, kind of wrapping that up more or less, and we're rapidly gonna move into the draft of the TSP. Um, and I will have a little bit of a discussion on the, um, calendar here going forward, but our work order contract for this project runs out um, on December eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-five of this year. So we definitely need to get this project done, uh, before the end of the calendar year, and that is our goal and intent. But we're gonna need a little help from you all, and I'll explain why, uh, in a few minutes. The topic here for this evening is, is basically tech memo number six, the proposed solutions. I think the majority of that content was provided in your packet. Um, I'm gonna give a high level synopsis of that. There's a lot of information in that packet. Uh, but we're prepared to go into some details if you have some particular questions based on your internal review. Um, the purpose of the proposed solutions memo is to identify projects that, that are needed to address, um, you know, circulation constraints over, uh, kind of a long-term twenty-year, uh, period. Um, the projects that we have identified and that we'll share with you this evening were kind of based on kind of three sources. One, looking at your existing TSP and pulling forward those projects that have not yet been built, but still have some merit and some viability for, um, addressing circulation limitations and constraints. Um, we've mined some other recent planning projects, uh, that have been adopted, uh, but have not been adopted as part of a TSP. For example, the two thousand and nine interchange area management plan, uh, the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, Laurel Lane interchange area management plan and various other documents that, um, the city has undertaken, um, planning efforts the city has undertaken, um, over the last ten years. And pulled forth, um, a lot of those projects that are still, um, have merit and, and value. And then the last bit being just the new independent technical analysis we've done, um, or under this particular, um, planning effort. And it resulted in, um, any number of projects that, uh, we've identified in the maps and in the tables, all with a particular focus on, you know, improving safety, circulation, connectivity, um, to key destinations and more importantly, I think for all, um, portions of the city. So um, the last bit of it is, uh, talking about, you know, potential funding sources for the implementation of those projects and as you, you all probably well know, um, a lot of the projects that we have identified on these lists, it's unlikely the city is gonna be able to fund those, um, you know, through their own, your own capital endeavors. You might be able to pick off a couple of them. But some of the big ticket items that we'll talk about tonight, um, most likely will be funded or need to be funded through partnering with other agencies like ODOT, Memorial County, public and private, um, or sorry, private, uh, entities and other, um, uh, unknown sources such as grants and other, um, competitive, uh, bid, um, funding sources. So we'll talk about those as well this evening. Uh, the first map that I'm showing here is, uh, what we're calling some proposed changes to your functional classification map. And if, if you're unfamiliar with the term functional classification, it's basically just a map that's in your current TSP and it breaks down and defines all of the different roadways in the city into, um, a couple of different categories. So freeway being one, and obviously that's I eighty-four. Um, it identifies arterials, those some of the highest order facilities, um, highest volume, highest speed facilities. So think Main Street. Um, collectors, uh, collectors are kind of a step down from arterials. And those are the roads designed to sort of connect the local system to the arterials. So at the moment, those are kind of limited to Marine Drive and Front Street, um, as your, North Front Street as your current collector's, uh, network. And then, um, the last two being more of your local streets. Um, so those are defined in the, as the neighborhood collector and then the local streets. So um, I don't necessarily want to pick apart this graphic too much, but anything highlighted in yellow is a proposed change that we're recommending, um, as part of this TSP update. And that change is reflective of perhaps maybe just changing, um, growth patterns in the city. Um, maybe a, a misstep with the current planning effort because it just didn't make sense for some of these roads to be classified the way they were. Um, so this was our attempt to just convey what we feel are some appropriate changes. Um, I'll point a couple of them out. Uh, Coonsy Lane, um, down at the bottom, um, believe it or not, that's classified as a collector. Um, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to be classified as a collector. It feels more like an arterial um, given its connectivity to, um, Tower Road to the, to the west. And it's long-term, um, sort of, uh, function in the city as it grows out over time. Um, the, any number of these other ones in here, uh, Oregon Trail Boulevard, um, not so much in its current state, but in its, in its future state, as we'll describe here in a few minutes. Makes a lot more sense for it also to be classified as an arterial. So, um, I'll pause here in case there's any particular questions, but these are just our consultant team recommendations. We presented these to our, um, PAC committee a couple of weeks ago, and, um, I don't believe there were any disagreements or, or concerns that were brought forth over these recommended changes. So if you all agree here or don't have any other concerns that we hear about, um, most of what you see highlighted in yellow will be incorporated into the draft TSP as a future, uh, reclassification, um, of that facility. Any questions on this one? Okay. I'll keep moving on. Um, the next graphic is a little more, uh, confusing. Um, it's, uh, what we're calling the proposed federal functional classification changes. So, um, you may or may not be aware, but, um, most roads in the United States have a overlay classification on the federal side of things. And, um, the purpose of the federal functional classification is to identify, uh, roads that might be eligible for federal funding, um, if they are deemed to be of some significance, um, to overall, uh, circulation. And strangely enough, the federal functionally classified roads in the city are limited to only a handful of, of roadways. Um, a, a bit of Coonsy Lane, um, down here at the bottom is classified, Main Street, um, is classified up to Marine Drive. Marine Drive is classified as well as Olmen and a little bit of Columbia down to the interchange is classified. And then the last bit is just Wilson Road. So um, we've identified, um, some proposed, um, recommended changes, uh, that we would recommend the city work with ODOT on to um, get updated and classified on the federal system. You may be asking ourselves, well, why should we do that? Well, it's no reason not to. Um, if you can get these roads classified on the federal system, um, they, they actually would be eligible for federal funding, um, if and when it came time to, uh, make some upgrades or some, some modifications or improvements to those, to those corridors. So it only makes sense to strive to get them added to the federal functional classification system. The, um, figure three here is a new figure as well, and, um, it's something that you don't have in your current TSP and it's, it's recommended on, from our perspective, and that would be a freight route designation map. Um, so we tried to break this down into just kind of two main categories, red being, uh, what we call regional freight routes. So, um, on this map, it would be limited to I eighty-four and those roadways that serve primarily the, um, industrial facilities in the Porta Moro. So think Columbia Avenue, um, parts of Marine Drive and Olmen and as well as Laurel Lane and the interchange itself. Um, the streets in yellow are what we're considering to be the local freight routes. So those are roadways that we can expect some freight on occasionally, but they would not be industrial related freight traffic. They would be Amazon deliveries and other moving trucks, um, that don't come through there on a, uh, ter- on a significantly frequent basis. Um, and the significance would be that we would recommend some policy changes and some design changes to those roadways such that, you know, they wouldn't be designed to accommodate, um, consistent large volume freight traffic. Um, the one comment we got from our PAC committee on this one was, um, a recognition that we weren't really accommodating or recognizing the fact that occasionally when the Porta Moro deals with, um, oversized and overweight vehicles or, um, freight-related, um, movements, sometimes they use, um, some of these streets. So, um, the roads in purple are a reflection of kind of what the Porta Moro recognizes as their oversized, overweight routes, um, um, that they rely upon to get some of that, um, that product off the container ships and onto the, uh, the highway system. So uh, the purple overlay, um, is a recognition of, of what uh, the Porta Moro, um, would need or would recognize as being needed for, for that accommodation. So again, another recommended, um, figure that if, if no disagreement is on, um, will find its way into the new TSP. So these next bunch of figures, um, and I'm gonna go through them pretty quickly. I'm not gonna highlight every single one of these projects, but, um, these are kind of broken down into modally, um, classified maps that show, um, recommended improvements, um, to the system. So this particular figure is the intersection and roadway corridor projects. So anything that you see in kind of a yellow or green or blue colored dot on the map, those rec- those are, um, traffic control, ge- or geometric improvements, turn lane improvements or turning movement restriction projects, um, that would be recommended for those particular intersections. Um, coded in respectively in the, in the, in the noted colors. Um, anything that's shown in sort of a dashed red, um, format would be a roadway corridor project. Um, so it would essentially be a new road that doesn't exist on the s- on the system today. And anything in a green dashed line would be a road reconstruction or modernization project. So modifying that road to do various things, add turn lanes, um, add capacity, um, add access management or some other time, uh, type of modification, but it's a reflective of, of changing something about that roadway corridor, not building a brand new one. So that would be the green labeled projects. Um, one of the things you'll probably see and recognize in here is, is, um, what we're called sort of a build out of the grid system. So it's basically recognizing that not all the parcels within the city's urban growth boundary or city limits are built out. And a lot of that is, you know, occurring south of Wilson Lane. Today, um, kind of south and west, uh, south of Wilson and west of Main Street, you're starting to see that infill occur. Um, but you've got large swaths and parcels that don't have, you know, any development on them, but we can reasonably expect that to happen in a twenty-plus year period. So we wanted to get ahead of that development and lay out the, kind of the expected grid pattern that we would like to see to support that development over time. Now, um, maybe I'll point out a couple of things in here is these lines on the map might look, um, fairly specific, um, but they are in fact just lines. Um, they're interpretations of connections. Um, and they're not meant to be precise alignments for a lot of this. We tried our best to kind of lay them out in a way that makes some sense based on some topographic and or some, uh, land parcel, um, um, that exi- parcelization that exists. But they are just in fact lines and there'll be notes on these maps when they're produced in the TSP that state as such, so that it, um, it's implied, but it's not, um, uh, implied that the connection should be made, but it's not laid out under a, a precision that suggests the line has to follow exactly on the map because you get into the development community and sometimes they want to lay their parcels out in a particular way, or there's a topographical challenge or a wetland challenge they have to work around. So, um, those notes will help to kind of keep the specificity of that a little bit more generic and less, um, less precise. Any questions on the intersection or roadway quarter projects and all? If you've got one that surrounds the interchange, just wait, because I got a lot of slides talking about that one here in a second. Okay, well, we'll keep moving on. Interrupt, uh, when you need to. Um, want to talk a little bit about the Main Street corridor because it's probably one of our biggest challenges in this TSP. Um, this is an old map that I extracted from our, um, existing and future conditions memo. And the red boxes on this kind of grainy aerial here, um, represents what we believe, and when I say we, it's a combination of, of myself and Eza working closely with Carla, uh, McLean and her staff to identify those parcels in the city that are the, lack of a better word, ripe for redevelopment or infill development, um, or are reasonably likely to develop based on current patterns and chatter with amongst the, the development community. Um, it is a projection. It's not a precise, um, this will develop, but it's just an expectation and, and a understanding that if anything's gonna happen over a twenty-year period, these are the parcels that are most likely to see some redevelopment or urbanization. So we took the, those, those parcels and did a little land use planning magic on them and, and, um, projected some land uses for them based on the development code and the zoning. And as a result, um, we projected traffic loading, um, associated with this development. So if, if one of these parcels like this box over here um, was forecast to be single-family residential, um, we estimated how many single-family homes could potentially exist on that site factoring in roadways and parks and right away and all the other stuff that typically goes into land development. Estimated what those, um, number of units might look like, estimated the traffic demands associated with those. And then modeled that demand, um, as it's kind of spreads and uses the existing, uh, roadway network. And, um, as a result, uh, the combination of all that, all that demand, um, it's no surprise that we start to have some intersections and some roadway segments that need, um, some improvements. Um, the first and most significant of that is what I'm gonna call the Main Street corridor roughly from Oregon Trail Boulevard. Um, its current intersection down here, um, all the way up to, uh, Boardman on the north side of the interstate. Um, this map here is kind of a, a reflection, a zoomed in, um, portion of one of those project maps, and it shows kind of what the city has been currently working towards, um, as it, as it's been following the recommendations of the two thousand and nine interchange area management plan. So those projects include, um, um, and have been reflected in, in recent project work such as the, kind of the baggage roads on the west, or sorry, the east side of Main Street, kind of going behind the um, this cluster development in between the Amazon, uh, data center complex spitting out, uh, a new roadway connection. The aerial is a little out of date, um, but I've tr- tried to uh, remodel the, the alignment, uh, in yellow. So a lot of this has been constructed. Um, and we know, um, the city is actively, uh, working with property owners, um, to establish a similar kind of baggage road on the west side, um, over here. And then there's a capital project, um, soon to be underway, um, extending Oregon Trail Boulevard. So a lot of, a lot of this, um, circulation and infrastructure is, is being worked on and the vision is coming to life. Um, however, the interchange area management plan also recognized, at least back in, is way back in two thousand and nine, that, that we're gonna have to deal with the intersections of Front Street. Um, and what did that mean and include? Well, I, I don't probably have to go into a lot of detail, but, um, y- you all know that that included at least some assumptions that the, both the north front street and the south front street intersections um, would be envisioned to be restricted to right in, right out. And this, it's not because we don't like it, like Front Street, and it's not because, um, we didn't value and we wanted to hurt the businesses on Front Street, but those intersections are just way too close to the freeway ramp terminals, and it creates some safety and some operational challenges. So the solution was to restrict those to right in, right outs and then rely upon these baggage roads, um, on the north and the south sides to provide that access for the development as it occurs over time. And, um, in doing so, it kind of point loads a lot of that demand. So on the south side, the future Oregon Trail Boulevard Main Street intersection is gonna be one of those roads that's gonna accommodate a lot of that, that redistribution of traffic, um, from these infill parcels that develop over time. And the same thing happens on the north side where Boardman Avenue, um, it gets the brunt of the redevelopment, uh, or sorry, the brunt of the redistribution of that traffic demand. So you end up with intersections like Boardman and Main and Oregon Trail Boulevard and Main that, that need some improvements. Um, in addition to that, we know that our freeway ramp terminals aren't functioning very well today. And they're certainly not gonna continue to function very well in the future when you've got an extra thirty or forty percent of traffic demand on those, um, on those, on those roadways and intersections. So what do we do about it? Um, and what can we do about it? Well, one of the challenges that we're facing within this I, uh, TSP update is the IAMP, while very beneficial and, and a really good, um, planning effort, um, fifteen-ish years ago, um, it failed, I think, to recognize how much additional demand the interchange ramp terminals were going to experience. Particularly when you factor in, um, a lot of freeway oriented development, um, that could and still very well uh, appear, um, in and around this interchange. Um, so much so to the point where, um, it didn't identify any improvements on them, um, other than a potential signalization. And one of the things we found is while signalization might resolve some of our problems, um, they didn't recommend what to do about the Main Street overpass. Um, as you recall and drive frequently, it's a two-lane overpass. It doesn't have any turn lanes um, on it for accommodating separate left and right turns, um, at the ramp terminals. And as such, y- if you were to just signalize those interchange, intersection, interchange terminals, um, you would have some really nasty, uh, long vehicle queues to the point where it would just sort of gum up and, and break the system down. Um, so that's traffic, um, analysis and in less than five minutes on what happens out there if we just let growth unabated occur, um, without some identified improvements. So um, wh- what can we do about it? So, um, these are some images that will be included or that are included in the, in the packet of our tech memo, um, and we'll be kind of memorializing those a little bit more. Um, but we got two options. So I'll start at the Main Street and Boardman Avenue intersection. Um, uh, the first option is we can just signalize it. Um, now it's a little more complicated than that. We gotta do some widening on the Boardman, east and west Boardman Avenue approaches, and you start to get into some impacts to the C and D, particularly their on-street parking on the north side of their building. Um, but I don't think there are any physical improve, or impacts to the building itself. Um, and there's some on-street parking on the north side over here that, that would likely be, um, removed in order to get, you know, the, the lane capacity that you would need on Boardman Avenue. But you could in turn simply just signalize this intersection with some other, um, relatively minor geometric improvements. And that signalization would provide that intersection with a lot of capacity, um, enhancements over time. Um, I think we know, um, from some more recent hearings, um, um, at the city that, uh, some of our gas station, um, property owners, um, have not really been in favor of signalization of that intersection and perhaps the, um, access control that might come with it, um, on the ba- on the Boardman or on the Main Street corridor. Um, and we, we understand that, um, we, it's not lost on us, um, that, that that could have some, some varying on how um, their businesses are impacted by such a, uh, traffic control, um, scenario going forward. Um, we did take a, a closer pass at what other traffic control options exist out there. And the image on the right is, uh, what we call a mini roundabout. Um, it's a little smaller than a traditional roundabout, um, and the main difference is you can fit these into tighter constrained environments. Um, um, more so than you can a traditional roundabout. Um, and, but you'd have to go through some special design parameters and considerations, and one of which would be that the center island in here wouldn't be as pronounced or raised as they normally are in other roundabouts that you've seen with some landscaping perhaps or some ornamental artwork. Uh, but these would be much lower profile center islands, um, that are fully mountable. Um, so in other words, if you were driving a, a large fueling truck, for example, to come and refuel at either the Sinclair or the Chevron, or were one of those oversized freight loads that the port occasionally runs through here, um, those, uh, those trucks could drive over, uh, the center islands, um, with minimal, um, minimal impact. But for the most of the rest of the motoring public, you would just circulate around them um, as, as intended. So, um, we did take a closer look at what a roundabout might look like and kind of determined that, you know, we could fit a mini roundabout at this location. Um, I think the benefit of the mini, the mini roundabout over the signal is it does provide a little better access opportunity to our gas station parcels. Um, more so than the signal, um, simply because if you are, um, looking at a roundabout and you wanted to go to Sinclair and you really valued Sinclair, the simple scenario The simple scenario, you can circulate sort of around the roundabout and just sort of make a U turn and come into their their driveways. More so than you could with a signal, a signal, you'd have to make a left turn and then circumnavigate a little bit behind and then come in on the backside of the Sinclair. So, you know, we're, we're trying to come up with some solutions that would better address, you know, the value and 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 that the valued partners that you have in your community and your landowners and and the importance of serving the those freeway oriented travelers that that frequent that interchange quite often. So these are just sketches. They're not meant to be precise graphics, although our our sketch artist on the right does a really good job of making them look realistic. But it's, it's really just a conceptual sketch, not meant to be anything more than that. So just a couple of options that we are exploring and and putting forth or considering putting forth in this TSP update, particularly for Main Street and Boardman. Any questions on that one? I suspect we're going to start getting some questions, so I'll pause on this one.
Well, this is Karen. And so on this one here where you've got the mini roundabout. And you say you're going to put it in the plan. Then where do we go after the plan? If, you know, because we need to do something up there sooner than later. So, okay, we get the plan done in December and then what?
Yeah, so it's, it's a question. At the moment, we've, we've said and we're kind of, there's a benefit to being flexible with these plans. But, you know, the, the, maybe the recommended approach at this point would be include a project description for Boardman and Main Street that says either signalize the intersection when warranted or construct a mini roundabout. That is typically about as deep as you need to go with these project descriptions. It gives you some flexibility to consider which of these options is is the most desirable. In recognition that you're probably still going to want to have some discussions with some property owners. You don't want to lock yourself into one or the other at the moment, but keep a flexible plan in place. Then where do you go from there is, you know, if you've got the, the dollars to build one or the other. Then you can just implement it as a capital project. And you, you go about your, your typical steps of of designing and and funding, designing and constructing the project on a as needed basis. But I think the roundabout right now is not in your current TSP and it's not in the interchange area management plan. So it would be an add on to the planning process, giving you the flexibility to further consider and choose which of these two makes the most sense based on the dollars that you have to spend and the impacts that you're likely to have on the properties that adjacent to it.
So do you put a cost estimate with this when you're preparing this plan?
We do, yep. Every one of these projects will have a rough planning level cost estimate. We'll do our best to get you to a level of precision, but it's not going to be a cost estimate that you can go to bid on, for example. But it'll be close enough, so.
And then, and then that, would there need be, we would have to go and then do an upgrade to our IAMP, correct? That would be the step following the TSP adoption?
No, that's kind of the beauty of of what we're, what we're going to do for you here. And certainly it's a recommendation at this point, but I can see it. We're going to bake in the previous recommendations from the 2009 IAMP into this TSP. So you don't have to even rely upon the 2009 IAMP anymore. We're going to include it as a reference. And we're going to extract all of the critical projects that haven't been implemented yet and and reintegrate those into the project list. So the IAMP in all of its, it'll be memorialized within this plan. But all the projects and all the details from it will be rolled into this new TSP. So you can almost ignore that old IAMP and this new TSP will incorporate all those, all those elements.
Matt, I, I had a question as well. So I understand consideration for the businesses and I understand the consideration of increase in traffic or potential increase. But what about the pedestrian? Essentially the, the traffic that happens there that's pedestrian, because I feel like in that area there is a lot. And then, you know, we also have a history of somebody that died there in attempting a cross. So I feel like with the roundabout, wouldn't there be more safety concerns regarding pedestrian crossing?
Yeah, great question. The, the signal itself obviously has been kind of kicked around a little bit in the past because it does offer some pretty significant changes for pedestrian standpoint. Right now you have what we call an RRFB, that rectangular rapid flashing beacon is a activated crossing. Pedestrian pushes the button, the lights flash and they wait for the traveler, the vehicles to recognize them and stop and then they walk. That I, I think has been a, a, a capital project the city implemented in reflection of that fatality you had a few years ago. I think it's generally been working well, although I think it has its limitations. The signal would essentially create a ped crossing opportunity on the signal itself. So there would be a ped phase that like you would have at any traditional traffic signal. The roundabout intuitively actually is a pretty safe. Research has shown to be a pretty comparably safe form of of traffic control device, not only for vehicles, but also works really well for pedestrians. Each of these legs would have a signed, highly signed and striped and highly visible stripe for pedestrian crossings. And the beauty of a roundabout is the size and the orientation prevents vehicles from traveling fast through them. I mean, you almost have to travel through them at a speed in which you know, is, is, is at a low enough speed to where your ability to recognize and see pedestrians is a lot safer. And one of the things you can do with each of these legs is incorporate those RFB crossings into the design itself. So for example, if we wanted to keep the RFB that exists, we could keep that on that north leg and or incorporate them into other legs just as an added enhancement. But generally speaking, roundabouts are and have been deemed to be, found to be pretty safe for pedestrians and and more so for vehicles. Intuitively speaking, it doesn't feel like it, but because there's not a lot of of roundabouts in eastern Oregon, but they they do work pretty well for pedestrians.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So on either one of these traffic controls, does it automatically implement the right turn only on Front Street? Because that was the topic of discussion in the past about how once we implement something up on Boardman Avenue, which is needed, that now northeast and southeast Front Street have to have right turn onlys. And that definitely affects businesses that are currently there. We have two gas stations and a bunch of food pods that would lose access to business almost immediately.
Yeah, yeah, another great question. I think the, the signal. Well, if you, if you're talking about Front Street, yeah, I think the minute you turn Front Street each and this is depicted in both of these images. So the median across Front Street limiting to the right and right out is depicted on both. The, the minute you implement that, whether it's tomorrow or in a year. You automatically trigger a pretty significant reroute to the Boardman Main Street intersection. To the point where you're almost kind of doubling a lot of that demand throughout the day. And at certain time periods, particularly when that school, the high school lets out in the afternoon and when it's, it's generating trips in the morning. You, you can see the, the power of what that might look like to those intersections. And so I think the minute you start to restrict Front Street to right in, right out. You almost need to follow that up almost immediately with with one or more of these intercheck, intersection control treatments.
So then are you also concerned with, so say a stoplight goes in there, gets put in there. Are you concerned with traffic getting backed up on the freeway now that you have a stoplight there stopping traffic altogether?
Yeah, we've analyzed that independent from some of these other scenarios. The hard part at the moment is we're looking in 20 year chunks. So we're not looking in one to two year windows here. We've got long term traffic projections. And we, we can't, we don't have the tools to precisely show what happens at year two. For example, if you implement it next year, we can estimate it. But it's not within the, the kind of the typical purview of a TSP. So the precision of of that question, I can't answer at the moment. I can just guesstimate and I, I hazard a guess that if you were to restrict Front Street to right in, right out today, that traffic signal. If you were to follow that up with a signal, you would, your queuing would be fine for any number of years. It's not until you start to look at the next few slides that I'll talk about here in a minute in the long run where you can't rely upon that, that anymore and you're going to need other system wide improvements. But you'd generally on that signal, you'd have a really short cycle length to keep those queues, queues quite short. Any other questions on this one? I know it's a lot to take in and there's a few more slides here to make it, make your head spin a little more. Well, if that's okay, I'll move on and then we'll come back to these if needed. The next one here is our friend, the interchange itself. And you almost have to look at this as a system. So we concentrated that previous slide on Boardman and Main Street. But you really can't look at it independent of, of this, of the larger system because it really is close enough to where what happens at Boardman and Maine affects the westbound ramp terminal, what happens at the westbound ramp terminal affects the eastbound ramp terminal. And what happens on Main Street affects all of them. So you have to look at it as a system. This graphic here is kind of an understanding that we can't let the existing ramp terminals continue to function in its current geometric format. There's just too much projected demand at this interchange. It's the main interchange to Boardman. It serves port traffic. It serves a lot of freeway oriented retail. And if Carla and her, and her staff continue to get the interest that they're getting, it's going to continue into expand and grow. And then you've got a lot of growth assumptions on the south side of Boardman contributing from a residential standpoint. And the convenience of this intersection is just so, so much that you're, you're kind of point loading a lot of demands in a, in a location with, with only one option for getting to and from the interchange, convenient option, that is. So we, we tried to look at it from the perspective of can we do anything at this interchange that would limit a big ticket modification of the intersection? So for example, I'm going to go back a few slides here. And one of the things that's currently in your TSP is, is a project that would extend Olson Road. Not as a freeway oriented connection. In other words, it wouldn't be any ramp terminals to and from the freeway, but an underpass or an overpass of Olson Road connecting the, the south side to the north side. One of the things we looked at is what really would happen under our new modeling scenarios? If that project were magically, if magically appeared and we had an underpass or an overpass, that location. How much traffic would actually shift to Olson off of Main Street? And I think one of the things we found is while that would be a valuable connection. Its location and its location with respect to a lot of the growth that we are forecasting and can be reasonably likely to expect, particularly in more of that south westerly corner of the city isn't as convenient as we would like it to be. To the point where while there would be some redistribution of Main Street traffic onto Olson to avoid under that congestion. We didn't find it to be at levels that would significantly or measurably change that demand. So that's, I think, one of the things we started to look at is, all right, how can we avoid big ticket improvements? Can we create parallel systems? Can we create less costly, less impactful additions to the system that would reduce the, the projected demands on Main Street? And we just didn't find with a sort of an honest look and think that, that Olson by itself would shift a lot of, of demand away from Main Street to levels to the point where all the traffic forecasted traffic problems would go away. So we kind of took a little bit conservative look and said, all right, let's just assume Main Street isn't constructed. What happens and what are our options? This is one of them. So this graphic here is just another sketch, but it kind of shows what we believe to be the solution for this intersection or for this interchange. So I'll start with the eastbound off ramp. As you know, today it's just a singling off ramp, unsignalized when it intersects with Main Street. We would estimate a, a, a traffic loading scenario to the point where we need to widen that off ramp. And we kind of sketched in the realignment, a logical realignment of that off ramp and a widening so that we would have a separate left and a shared through right lane to facilitate that loading coming off the freeway. Kind of the same thing happening on the westbound off ramp, widening that westbound off ramp to include a separate left and right. So that in and of itself, I think, would all occur reasonably within the existing ODOT right away. It's wouldn't be cheap because you've got a lot of embankment on the hillside here. But that's, I think, within reason, very possible improvement. What gets more challenging is what do you do with Main Street itself? The overpass is, is a two lane bridge. It's just wide enough for a pretty small sidewalk on both sides. But it's two travelings. It doesn't have any separate left lanes, left turn lanes to go west on ID four or east on, on ID four. So you get in a scenario where you got one vehicle trying to turn left, it's going to block all the vehicles behind it. That's happening today. It's going to happen at greater levels in the future. So we've got to recognize that and we've got to, got to look at ways to address that. And because you have such a constrained interchange in here, you can't really explore any alternate interchange forms. You kind of have to just rely on the diamond form given the right away constraints. So what can you do? Well, I think the minimum is in addition to these on and off ramp changes is you're going to have to rebuild that overpass. It's, it's right now, it's vertically constrained. It doesn't meet ODOT's minimum vertical clearance standards. So you can't just put a Band-Aid on it. You're going to have to just completely rebuild it, widen it out and rebuild it roughly on its current location. And this is just a sketch that kind of shows kind of what that impact looks like. It, it, it certainly probably in an implementation scenario might look a little different. Because you might try and build half that interchange while keeping the old one open. And then you would demo the, the old one and put traffic on the newly constructed half of the new one and shimmy the, the traffic around during that construction process. But generally speaking, I think this sketch is one option that might demonstrate the impacts of, of what a widened reconstructed overpass might look like. And then you can kind of mix and match what you do over here at Boardman and Maine with either that signal or the roundabout. Also then ultimately signalizing those two ramp terminals themselves. So that I think is one of the big ticket items that we are finding and would be recommending that this TSP recognize going forward. And I, I don't think I'm telling you anything you haven't already realized or expected. But that is, I think, one of the biggest challenges of this TSP going forward, given the constraints that you have and most importantly, the cost of something like this. And we haven't done a real detailed cost estimate on this, but you can get into the multiple tens of millions of dollars. Probably, you know, 30 plus million for something like this under today's dollars. By the time you get around to building it, it might be most likely 30, 40 million or more after that. So not an insignificant project and, but one, I, I think that we truly believe is needed to kind of support Boardman going into the future. I will pause on this one as well because I imagine you have some questions.
So widening the, the bridge, you would go four lanes, is what I assume?
Yeah. Yeah, good question. You're, you're probably picking out some eagle eye limitations here. But yeah, most likely it would be a four lanes. It would be one southbound lane, one northbound lane, and then two side by side left turn lanes. That would give you the ultimate flexibility. This shows a back to back left turn. But I think that side to side is probably more realistic for long, longer term stability of that interchange. And then you'd need to, you, you need to taper and connect back to the existing three lane section on, on Main Street.
How, how would that expansion affect northeast and southeast Front Streets?
It would, it would probably affect the crossing or the, the, the widening would, would in order to get the widening to the overpass itself. You'd need to taper back through the Front Street intersections. But in this case, kind of following the recommendations of the 2009 IAMP, both Front Street North and South would be median restricted to right in, right out or closed altogether. Depending upon the design configurations. But I think you get away with right and right out. Shorter shorter closing.
So the only the businesses on the left side would be affected, right? The the right side, so the right side of each intersection would have easy access from the freeway and then the other side would basically just be cut off. Is what it kind of sounds like on front streets?
I I think if you're talking about front street or you're talking about the driveways between, which one are you referring to? I'm sorry.
Well, on north and south or whatever, if you go right turn only, only two sides of that get basic access from the freeway if you're a business owner. Okay, so it would be really important if somebody owned both those lots and could build off of that because the left side would be cut off. Because you'd have to loop around and just hope that maybe you'll get some some business.
Yeah, I think that's probably a reality of 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 that. Yeah, it's a good point. I I'd say that the the beneficial property owners would be on the the right side of the respective movement. But I think if you kind of looked at maybe that roundabout option up here at Boardman, it would provide that U-turn capability to get back to the businesses on the left side. And that would be a potential option. But yeah, I think that is a rec- of of an honest limitation of this interchange. And the improvements shown here, recognizing that we're trying to improve the system. But sometimes there's some impacts and some benefits or disbenefits to certain properties.
Because I think the problem is on the southeast side. You the median is the way they had it designed is supposed to go all the way to what was an Oregon Trail. Which is way further than northeast would have to deal with. And so there's a ton of business on that side, on the right side, that would be directly affected. And and they're not going to, people aren't going to, I mean, I don't care what anybody says, nobody's looping all the way around a mile to go to businesses on that side. They just won't go. They'll go to the right side business. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, it's understood.
And then there's like, there's like fourteen businesses on that side and you're going to just cut off access to them.
Okay, I want to think about something different. So you know, like there's I don't know about ODOT necessarily, but you know, sometimes they just come along and they say, you know, we're just going to close this and make us road around your town. And too bad about you. And I'm sure they wouldn't do that here because of the fact that this is a freeway and it's a federal highway. So have we thought about any way to maybe push more of the traffic down to the port exit instead of leaving so much of it coming in on that Main Street exit? Am I clear or not? I just have known so many towns that have, you know, the road just went around them and too bad about you and your business. None of you are going to give it. Well, Walla Walla is a perfect example of right now. And to she and all those places. Yeah. So what, how broad do you think about this stuff?
Yeah, it's a great question, Karen. I I think I backed up a little bit to this map here. That kind of shows our intersection and roadway corridor projects. One of the things that it may be a nuanced detail here, but I think what we're doing with this plan is we're recognizing that, you know, if you look at Oregon Trail Boulevard today, only a small bit of it has been constructed on the on the east side of Main Street. And then it just sort of dead ends past that last bit of residential. And one of the things that we're recognizing is we certainly wanted that Oregon Trail Boulevard to extend easterly. So Project R four would show a widening of or a reconstruction and a widening of an extension of Oregon Trail over to Olson. Unfortunately, this land over here that has all these little wet wet water features on it, this is not in your U G B today. But could be at some point in the future. So we've actually shown a project R, I think it's R six or eight. I can't see the number. With an assumption that at some point, maybe this land will be brought in. And at that point, if you kind of project these two ends here, we can look at Oregon Trail Boulevard as being a continuous sort of parallel frontage road to to ID four. And then when if and when that happens, right, it kind of connects and opens up these two interchanges a little bit more so than there are today. So at some point in the long, long term future, I think that's the vision is trying to get the Laurel Lane interchange more integrated into the main part of Boardman so that you can use it as a two interchange system. Right now, it's a really a one interchange system for most of that freeway oriented retail. And and in the future, I think we'd recognize that that needs to change and need to get a better connected system. So I know that's not probably the answer you were looking for, but hopefully it's angling in that direction. We have been trying to think that along those lines and envision a a a longer term, big picture sort of grid based network of streets that will provide those opportunities that you don't really have today, given the kind of the sawtooth edge that you have on your urban growth boundary. But recognizing there's a lot of opportunities for expansion and infill going forward. Trying to recognize that and build that out in in a way that allows for that connection to be made more logically in the future.
So how does this plan tie in with that? The I A P part of that exit down there at the port? Because it would seem to me like that if, you know, every every year you've got to do something. And so if they were going to do something on like Laurel Lane, say, say they some development happened out on Laurel Lane and you went out there to take that hill away and make that so that that didn't go down there and do some of that major construction out there. It seems to me like we need to be part of that plan. So that when they're spending that money to do that, that it benefits the downtown part of Boardman.
Yeah, well, so the the Laurel Lane, two thousand twenty-two Laurel Lane or Portimoro I A M P had a sort of a grander vision of how to fix that intersection predominantly not so much for Boardman related traffic for port related traffic. And there was a roundabout in a consolidation of the Columbia Avenue Laurel Lane intersection in the in the off ramp. That project and that I those I A P elements are being brought into this T S P update so that you don't have these three planning projects all separate, under separate cover. So we're taking all of those identified projects and bringing them forward. So I would say we are attempting to incorporate all these other planning projects and bring them into sort of one cohesive planning document and then tie those projects together with other supporting projects like the Oregon Trail Boulevard example that I just gave. So we are trying to think a little bit more holistically and and make sure that all these other separate past planning efforts are are trying to be integrated a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
I there might be some more questions, but we're getting a little short on time here and I have a hard kind of stop at seven o'clock. My son's getting recognized for some scouting achievements. I don't want to miss those. So I did arrange that with Carla. So if you don't mind, I'm going to just hit the last couple of slides and then Isa and Shayna can take you to the end if if you need to go past seven o'clock. I'll just hit a few more and then I'll give it over to Shayna. She can talk about her role in this project going forward and then talk about schedule and conclude the evening. This figure here is kind of a hard figure, confusing figure to read, but it's called local street connections. And typically, we like to include these types of maps in your T S P because it helps the development community kind of understand what the city expects their site plans to do from a site access and local circulation perspective. So each of these little yellow arrows on here represents an expectation that when that vacant parcel or underdeveloped parcel develops, this is what the city is going to want to see from an access standpoint in terms of where those local street connections are going to occur in relation to the either the existing or the planned network. So you'll see a lot of double ended year arrows on here recognizing what the city's expectations are going to look like for that future development. It's kind of a nice figure to have because that way the the developer doesn't come in with its with their plan. And it says, hey, we want fifteen different accesses off of Main Street. And the city is going to say, no, you're going to get one and it's going to be roughly somewhere between X and Y intersections and all of your other access, you know, should be located in a little bit more logical or or organized manner as shown by this figure. So it's one of those helpful figures that I think Carla and her staff will rely upon going forward as they negotiate with property owners and developers about where accesses and driveways and and local streets should occur. We didn't, we don't always deal with roads and freight. We also include bike and ped projects with our T S Ps. So these blue lines represent different pedestrian oriented improvements ranging from intersection crossing improvements to new sidewalks, new multi-use pathways and some other miscellaneous improvements that would improve and and make the pedestrian environment a little bit more friendly going forward. One thing you'll notice in here is we didn't include ped projects on new local, a new street projects. So for example, if we extend Oregon Trail Boulevard to the east and west, that extension will naturally come with bike and ped projects. So we didn't call those out. So it's not that we don't want to see bike and ped improvements on Oregon Trail. We're just incorporating those improvements in the roadway project description itself. Bicycle projects are the same way. The green represents new bike facilities, like a bike lane or a buffered bike lane. And then the orange is kind of an expectation that those would be roadways more appropriate for shared lane environments. So some strategic signing and striping to better accommodate bikes on in a shared lane environment. So a lot of these projects are recognized as such. Any questions from a modal standpoint? We kind of walked through those pretty quickly, but I think those were the the big ones. If not, I'll give Shayna a few minutes to talk about her development code and implementing ordinances task.
Excellent. Thanks, Matt. Can everyone hear me? Okay? Let me know. It'll just be a few minutes, but let me know if you have any problem hearing me. I'm Shayna Reberg. I'm a land use planner with a company called M I G. And so one of our supporting roles in this project is drafting development code updates for implementing this new twenty year timeframe T S P. So as a note right up front here, there was not anything in the packet for you to review related to what I'm about to talk about. But there will be materials for review coming up. So please just consider what I'm sharing here as prep and preview, if you will. So earlier this year, M I G worked on and just internally an evaluation of the city's development code and the kind of changes that it would need in order to implement the updated T S P as well as comply with the state's transportation planning role or what we call T P R. So as far as the general results of that code assessment, I'd say we're not looking at anything major, no major changes, but rather ones that are pretty minimal and pretty typical for Oregon communities of Boardman's size. So I'd say that the changes are more so refinements of the existing regulations in your development code as well as some needed changes that are a little more administrative or procedural in nature. So overall, no, no big surprises, no necessarily big lifts here. Next slide, please. I generally group the themes of the assessment results that we came up with into three categories. So one of these categories would be making new development or redevelopment a little more transit supportive such as orienting sites toward existing or planned transit stops, providing strong connections from within a development site to transit stops, again, existing or planned. And then requiring coordination between a site's developer and the transit provider when it comes to potential transit stop improvements that are adjacent to a development site. So just a general note here, kind of on this theme, I would say an overall goal of T S P related code updates are often to strengthen the options to travel by multiple ways, if you will, within the city. So a second theme in the code assessment findings were T S P consistency. So whatever access spacing or road spacing standards and updates that are being made in this new T S P, we want to make sure to reflect those in the code. So just kind of some common sense stuff. The same goes for street design standards. Anything that's updated with the T S P, we want to make sure that the same goes into the code. It's also recommended to update the code to require compliance, not just with the state's T P R, but with your T S P when land use map or text changes are proposed. So again, a bit on the procedural side, but important in ensuring consistency and alignment through development and your transportation plan. So a third theme has to do with how transportation facilities are permitted and reviewed, including when transportation projects are not subject to land use permitting and development review. So I would call that, yeah, a third theme of code assessment findings. So yeah, next slide. So that evaluation memo was more or less a stepping stone and kind of interim internal product that M I G is now turning into what's called the draft implementing ordinances memo. It's a mouthful. This memo will have these code ideas presented as draft, underlined and struck through language. So something a little more official looking. This is a memo that we'll review with the project management team. And then at a joint city county work session that I believe is coming up in just a few months, doing some workshopping on that code language with you then as needed. And after that, we'll update the the draft of the code language to create an adoption version, which will I think it is the city planning official Carla's intention to consider and adopt these code updates along with the updated T S P itself, which segues us back to Matt or Isa and the next steps. And before we do that, I know I just threw a lot out there. And again, it's a little bit of a preview, but but any questions or comments before I hand it back?
Okay, thanks, Shayna.
Shirley.
Okay, Carla, I guess maybe I'll turn this back to you a little bit. We just full disclosure, Carla and Isa and Shayna, I met this morning to talk about our calendar. I hinted at the first onset of the presentation that we've got a contract expiration that runs out in in mid mid December. So we are going to, if I, I'm going to go back to this timeline for a second. We're going to be focusing and striving to get this plan done and back in an adoption process before the planning commission and city council roughly in the months of October and November. In order to make that happen, that's going to require a full draft of the T S P and those code and implementing ordinances that Shayna just talked about to be completed by roughly the first week of September. And there's a requirement that a draft of the T S P needs to be submitted to D L C D for review before the first evidentiary hearing, which would be in early October in front of the planning commission. So our timeline has got us kind of pedal to the metal at this point. And I think we wanted to just have a conversation with you all this evening about kind of what that means. So Carla, if you want to kind of take over a little bit and talk about schedule and and those dates that we had talked about this morning.
Absolutely. So again, Matt had mentioned that we'll we'll need to do some kind of a joint joint work session with the county. The county is required to co-adopt the T S P. And the reason for that is because they actually apply our T S P standards in the U G B when they're doing planning in the T in the U G B. And we probably want to make sure that our provisions that would be applicable there really do mean what we want to see happen as the U G B develops and grows because that is the area that will eventually it will be the first area that will be annexed in the city. So we're targeting early September for that. It will be trying to work around four different organizations' schedules to find something that works. Our planning commission, their planning commission, our city council, their board commissioners. So I'll be reaching out to Tamara sooner rather than later and beginning to look at that and see what we can do relative to coordinating that. Or size and space, we'd probably be looking at holding that kind of a of a session at either the Sage Event Center or the Portimoro offices, just to accommodate a double this size of group, not by double the size group, but see, you know, almost double the size of group in the room and then have opportunity for people to have space to sit. So we're targeting early September for that. There's a lot that goes on in early September. There's a lot that goes on in early September in the region. Um, we have a, a roundup in Pendleton that a lot of people like to go to in that first part of September. School is usually just getting going. There's a holiday. That's a three-day weekend. So we'll try to figure out how we target in between all of that. Um, but we will be asking for some, some accommodation. It might be an extra meeting on a night that you wouldn't normally meet. So I, I just, I, I want you to be aware of that and, and we'll coordinate and between Brandon and I will work with you all on what that looks like. We are looking, planning commission meets on Octa, yeah, October sixteenth. That's our regularly scheduled planning commission night. That's what we're targeting for the public hearing in front of the planning commission for both the draft T S P and the associated, um, ordinance provisions. Um, all goes well there. It would then come to you then on November fourth. Um, and if all goes well there, um, we would work towards adoption. Because of the, of how our ordinance adoption provisions are written, that we can do it in one reading. If you're all here and you vote unanimously, um, we will try to attempt that on November fourth. Um, there's a lot of assumptions in that and that means that things go smoothly in the, in the review and the adoption process. Um, so we are making sure we have December second available if needed. Um, to either continue the hearing or do the ordinance reading in two steps. So again, um, as we're working through this, as questions come up, as concerns are identified, please reach out early so that we can work with you, you know, to answer questions and make sure that we're all comfortable with the product we're working towards. Um, I think it's really important to remember that Boardman hasn't updated your T S P since two thousand and one. Um, and so it is, it is an older document. Um, I think that Matt and Isa are doing a great job relative to incorporating the issues around both of our interchange area management plans into this document so that we can really begin to look though at, at the current I A Ps as almost background or, or, or they're, they're all but replaced. Um, the code provisions, I was, I was really kind of surprised because again, our code is almost as old as our conference of plan. The last major update was in two thousand and three. But surprisingly, I was, I was surprised. Well, we have some concerns with the code relative to T P R compliance. A lot of it was just really refinement. Um, we're probably most weak with issues around walkability and bikeability. So the whole pedestrian and, and, um, kind of multiple mobile piece. Um, but it wasn't as bad as I was expecting when I read, when I read that internal memorandum that they were talking about. It was like, okay, this isn't as extreme as I was expecting. So, um, not to say that there aren't code provisions that need changing, but it's not, it's not a wholesale rewrite of the development code relative to compliance with the T S P and T P R. So that was a lot and I apologize. I know there's some planner speak in there, but, um, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Right now or later?
Now or later, whatever.
I'd rather later. So I'll drive this home.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And again, again, if, if any of you want to just come in and sit down and talk, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Um, uh, and if any of you have an interest in attending any of the upcoming pack meetings, you're also can watch the calendar and see those. You won't necessarily, if you're not, the, the council are assigned to a pack, you're not gonna receive that email or that announcement. But that information is all available on the website and where, you know, if one of you want to say, hey, let me know when the next T S P pack is, happy to do that so you can participate. And I just have to watch out for form issues. Did I, was that it, Matt? Anything you would add to that?
No, no, I think it's ma- maybe just, um, you know, maybe just getting those dates on your calendars and to the extent you can, um, be sure to be at those hearings so that we can avoid some, maybe some costly and some timely, um, delays through that adoption process.
I just, I just have one question. Are those visuals available?
Yes, we've posted, they're either already posted or will be posted after this meeting. So, so when it's a joint workshop, they're kind of.
Delayed or whatever.
Well, Amanda posed, they're, no, they're up there.
They're up there.
Um, she kind of, she kind of says on the T S P page, she says there was a joint workshop and links back to your packet.
It was probably at the bottom of what I was looking at then. I just didn't see it here, so.
I, I would only ask, um, i- if you're refraining from of, uh, passing those around too significantly, they're all very draft at the moment. So, um, I know those, those graphics can get, uh, out in the community and they can take on a life of their own if the, if the context is lost. So, um, that's the, you know, we ask. I, I did have one other, um, ask of you all today, and it's really more of an ask of the community in general. As we start to produce the draft of this T S P, T S Ps always work better and look better when they got some really great photographs, um, of the community. And unfortunately, the few times Isa and I have been out this year, um, through, you know, given the limitations in our scope and our budget, um, hasn't been the best times to take photos of, of the community and people walking and biking. And now that the summer's kicked in and the weather's a lot nicer, um, really love to have, um, some photos. I don't know if we got some aspiring photographers or some established photographers in town that you might know about who might be willing to take some photos of the community um, for potential inclusion in the T S P. Um, don't necessarily have a menu of things that I'd like to see, but you know, just some photos of the community, um, people out enjoying and biking, walking and, um, using the bike lanes on Main Street, um, using the multi-use paths up near the park. Freight traffic, if you're, if you're so inclined, um, just things that represent the community. Um, we've got a few photos, but to be honest, we don't have a, a large um, sort of few photos to choose from. So if you know of anybody who likes to take photos or if you are one of those individuals and wouldn't mind um, helping us out in that regard, um, that would be, uh, make for a much better visual T S P at the end of the day. Um, I would ask, um, for those who are unfamiliar, if you're gonna take photos of people in them, um, unless you're willing to get their permission, um, try and get photos of people that don't include their faces. So, um, maybe walking from the back, um, um, that don't identify them. And if they're children, of course, you'll need to be mindful of, 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 you know, reaching out to their parents or guardians to, to make sure they're okay with that being published. But, um, that would be an ask. So, um, perhaps there's someone, um, in town who has some of those skills. Um, we'd love to talk to them and, um, see if we can get some great photos of the city.
Well, Matt, Amanda got it. They were taking a high white and heavy food the other day. Amanda got some pictures. So I'll get you a high white and heavy picture or two.
Oh, great, great. I don't think you want that in your T S P, but, uh, um.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll give you some pictures of Main Street under construction here shortly.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, maybe get someone's, uh, under, under construction too.
See some pictures.
Yeah, so, well, um, thank you for this evening. Um, hopefully it was informative. Um, we got a few more things to, to step through. Um, but the next time you, you see and hear from us, um, we'll have a kind of fully looking draft of this T S P. Maybe it will not be the fully visually baked version, but the content will be there. Um, the maps and the tables will all be refined. And, uh, that's when we can kind of get into the specifics and really start to fine tune this thing, uh, to kind of make your vision and needs. So. Um, but it's been great working with, um, Carla and her staff. Appreciate the, um, PAC committee we've been working with. They've been really great and diligent about, uh, coming to all of our meetings and, um, your comments have been great tonight. We documented all those and to the extent they need to be, um, incorporated into finalization of, of memos, we'll do that. Anything to add, Isa? I know I did all the talking, but, um, Isa's been the silent, um, partner on this project and she's been done, doing a lot of the work. So a lot of the great work that you see here is a lot of her hard work, so.
Nope, I've got none to add.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. With that being said, uh, you counselors or commissioners, present have any question? None heard. Meeting is adjourned.